The time is 4 o'clock PM and we are convening as the Provo City School Board of Education. We are meeting at 280 West, 940 North in Provo, Utah. And we're going to begin with a roll call and we will start with Devin.
Devin Daly, Business Administrator.
Board member.
Tara McCabe, Board Member.
Gina Hales, Board Vice President.
Jennifer Partridge, Board President.
Wendy Dow, Superintendent.
Meg Van Wagenen, Board Member.
Emily Harrison, Board Member.
Melanie Hall, Board Member.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to start our study session?
I move we start our study session.
Okay, motion made by Board Member Van Wagenen. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Harrison. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, we are now in study session. And we are going to begin with our board training, which this week is my turn. So today, we're going to be talking about Business Administrator responsibilities and the board relationship between the board and the Business Administrator. There is a PowerPoint. I know Bonnie's pulling it up, but it's also attached to your board docs. I'll just go ahead and get started. First of all, the responsibilities of Business Administrator are outlined very specifically in Utah State Code. And one of those is to take care of all of our records.
That's not the one.
That's not the right one. That's for Devin.
And that's the wrong one. Anyway.
It's okay. The Business Administrator is responsible and accountable for all the money received and dispersed, signings, things, our monthly reports. There we go. Yes, go ahead and go to the next slide. Alright, so I just kind of highlighted those, so go ahead and go to the next one. All of the budgeting, accounting procedures, and, sorry, our annual statements, all the right documents, all the internal controls. So basically, I'm glad, Devin, that I don't have your job because it's a lot to know and to be in charge of. So thank you for doing that. And then, so those are all the ones, the bullet point ones are the ones in code. And then also, the Business Administrator works with Board President, Vice President, and Superintendent to prepare our meeting agendas and just kind of, we work together as a team for those kinds of things. Okay, you have the next one, thank you. And then our policy about this relationship says it's required that we have a close working relationship because we need the trust and candor. I like the idea of the candor, that we need to be able to speak openly with one another, make sure we're all on the same page, and understanding what our needs are, what our constraints are, all of those kinds of things. Okay, next slide. And this is also from our handbook here, the relationship with the board. So we, as a board, expect the Business Administrator to, you know, keep all their duties and everything we just talked about already. The middle one says that we rely on them for the advice and expertise. In fact, Meg just came up for the meeting and asked me a question, and I was like, yeah, go to Devin. I think I might know the answer, but I know Devin really knows it. So we definitely rely on that expertise, so. And the communication of information to the board and just being open with the things that we need to know. And then, as you guys all know, that we evaluate the Business Administrator each year on their performance, just like we do with the Superintendent. And their contracts are up for renewal every two years, and that's one of our responsibilities. They're the two people that we hire. The next slide. And so this just also emphasizes that we need good communication between the board and the Business Administrator. And so, you know, there should be a system of communication, but also, if we ever have questions, like, we go to Devin. And I always appreciate, you're always happy to answer and to take the time and to make sure that we understand, so that as we vote on important things like the budget, we know what we are voting on. Any questions or other input? There we go. We will move on to the next item, which is our student travel report. We put this on the agenda. We wanted to hear from some of the bigger trips that we've approved as a board to see how those went this last year. So I'm going to turn it over to Wendy to set the rest of this up for us.
So I'm going to have Brooke come forward and just talk about Centennial Middle School took a group of students to New York. And then she has shared with us a video that we would like to show, just to kind of highlight the awesome things that happened there.
Yeah. I don't know if we want to start with the video and then maybe follow up with questions?
Oh, let's do that.
That might be the easiest, because the teacher, our teacher's in the airport and sent a video, and students were like out of the country and sent videos to me, so. But they say a lot of the cool stuff, and then I could answer questions or kind of add to that.
Can you remind, for those who may not know, what the trip was for?
Yeah, it was a musical theater trip to New York to work with Broadway professionals, and they performed at the Lincoln Center.
Okay, thank you.
...but also about relationships and social skills and big cities and just so many things I took away from that that I did not think I would and that will, like, give me future opportunities and help me throughout my whole life and possibly even my future career. And I'm so glad that I went on this trip, and I know it helped me grow as a person and it helped me grow intellectually and socially and, like, I'm just so glad I had the opportunity.
I also really liked the rehearsals, and I learned how to story tell. My favorite part of the New York trip was eating fish and ice cream and performing
Hi, Superintendent Dow and the rest of the school board. I'm sorry if there's background noise or if it looks weird. I'm actually in an airport right now, but I really wanted to send this video and tell you a little bit about our trip to New York in the spring and really express my gratitude for your support of this trip. So really quickly, to just give you a little bit of a rundown of what the trip looked like for the kids. We got there and had about 24 hours, just because we flew in a little bit early. And then we got right into rehearsals, and these kids got to work with industry professionals, people who have worked on Broadway, both in the performing side and backstage side. And it was incredibly, I don't know, it was really just incredible to see them push these kids to be professionals in these rehearsal spaces and to treat these middle school students, these 14-year-olds, 13- and 14-year-olds, to be professionals, to dress professionally, to be on task 100% of the time, to be completely engaged and focused, and to really show them what working on Broadway would be like. So they spent this time in rehearsals for about three days, and then they got to perform in the Lincoln Center. This was hard for our kids, but they pushed themselves and they were really, really proud of themselves, which was really cool. Our kids represented themselves and their school and our district really well. They were often called out in front of the group to demonstrate positive things, things like posture or things like, things like you're singing this phrase really well or you're doing this dance move really well. And we had, we had one of our students, or two of our students chosen as soloists before we left, but then three of our students were chosen after we got there to be soloists in front of the group, which was really cool, because there were six students total that were chosen, and three of those students were ours. So that was really exciting. We were able to go see The Outsiders as part of this trip, and for almost all of our students, it was their first, like, Broadway show. After the show, the students, we took them to the stage door to meet the actors, and the students were talking with the actors, and they, the actors were like, oh, you guys are so cool, like, good luck on your performance. And the kids were so inspired by that, not just by the Outsiders actors, but also by the Broadway actors that came to perform with our students, who treated our students like colleagues. And that was a really neat thing to see. They were excited for our students. They came and listened to them sing, and it wasn't like, I'm going to perform with these kids, right? They were, they were very impressed by the students, and they were taking selfies with them, and they were like, you guys are so good and so cool. And that really was a neat thing to see as well, that they treated these 14-year-olds as their, as their peers instead of just these little kids, right? A few stories. Our, the ratio of sopranos and altos to tenor basses was pretty, pretty awful. There were about 60 soprano altos to about eight basses. And the first rehearsal was pretty hard and pretty discouraging, to be honest, for the, for those basses. But they, the music director and the choreographer really spent some good time, one-on-one, with those basses. They brought in some other professional singers to sing with them for a day, for, well, for just one rehearsal, to sing behind them so that they could hear that strength that can come from just two, two strong basses. And then they also, the boys got to see The Outsiders and saw these strong men performing onstage, and all of a sudden, our basses, our boys that were basses, they stood up and they sang with such strength, and you could hear these eight basses equal to all of the sopranos and altos, which was really cool. We, during the performance, these kids just glowed. It was really, really cool. I get emotional every time I think about it, because, and all of the other teachers, not all of them, but a lot of the other teachers were really emotional during the concert because our kids just got up and they just sang their hearts out and danced, and there was so much confidence. It was a really, really neat and powerful thing to see these students just get into it so much. The one thing that they really emphasized with these students was that teenagers have some, have important things to say, and how you do that through song and through performance. And so, to see them really work through these lyrics was really, really cool and tell their stories. I just have a few more things. It was such a cool trip, it was hard for me to narrow things down. Coming back from the trip, I have a lot of these kids in class, second semester, and so I got to perform with them after that, with our school musical, while they got to perform with my class in school musical. And I saw a lot of changes from my students. They were more animated, they were telling stories more with their music, and they were also sharing what they had learned with their classmates.
I know Jennifer came and watched it with us at the end of the school year.
This was such an excellent experience for the students, and in such a short amount of
And just a couple of things to add, they spent the entire school year prepping for
time, they worked so hard and they were so proud of themselves.
this. So they auditioned, and then they had, during our, like, pack time, they had rehearsals
And I am so grateful that in Provo School District, we were able to do this.
throughout the year, and they had to work on their vocals. They had to send in videos of their progress, and they got feedback along the way. About a week before we left, they completely, like, recut the music and sent us new sound, and they had to kind of relearn things and adapt to that. And then when we got there, the first day of rehearsal, they did it again, and they were like, actually, I don't like this part, we're just going to cut it. And it threw the students for a loop. And when they say they learned what it's like to really be in that industry, they did. They were expected to dress professionally, to behave professionally. I have other videos where the students talked about how they're like, we couldn't just talk to our friends, you know? We had to be really focused. And part of it was because of the expectations, but also because if they weren't, they would miss these constant changes and the notes and things that they were given. And it was really fast-paced. So most of their time in New York was spent working and learning and rehearsing and doing all of these things. It was actually very little, like, tourism time. So we got there, yeah, the day before everything started. The next morning, they had morning rehearsal, and then we had a short break, then they had afternoon rehearsal, a short break, and evening rehearsals. And that was kind of our everyday routine. They had rehearsal really all day, and we'd have a couple of hours here and there to take breaks. The day of the concert, they did a full professional sound check at the Lincoln Center. All of the people they worked with are current Broadway professionals, a current choreographer, director, the pianist is a current musician who works with Broadway, and the singers who were performing with them. We had Nikki Renee Daniels, who was in Hamilton in Chicago, and she's currently in a bunch of shows. And Michael Malia Kell, he came with the Tabernacle Choir to Salt Lake just this last Christmas, I believe, and then he was Aladdin on Broadway, and he's currently in The Great Gatsby. So they're very current actors, and they did, they treated the students like professionals and colleagues, not just little kids. And I was actually really surprised at how much time they spent with us. I thought for sure we would only see them at the concert and maybe the sound check, but they were with us, like, most of the time. So that was pretty awesome. And just a quick note, a couple of you have heard me say this. As a student in high school, I played multiple sports. I was on choir, and I danced, and I traveled a lot for those things. As a coach, I did that as well, and as a teacher, I've done that as well. And this is hands-down the best travel experience I've ever been a part of, whether as a student or an educator. Just the amount of learning and the impact from a learning perspective was huge. Sometimes I feel like our trips are still impactful, but they're a lot of fun, and we throw in these little experiences and things that are good, but this was hard work. These kids were really, really worked hard, and the benefits from it and just watching them and the growth, like Melissa Brown said, watching the basses, it was a huge amount of growth and just the confidence in those boys from day one to day two. And then by the time they got to the concert, it was pretty impressive, so.
Any questions for Brooke? Thank you so much, this is so insightful, so. Appreciate it.
Okay. Yeah, we do. So if you guys will pull up the video, the star, this is a dance film that was produced by Provo High School Dance Company in collaboration with the AP art students as part of their trip. Students, so I'm going to read this to you, this student wasn't able to be here tonight, but students were tasked to create works inspired by art and collections at the Met Museum. The 12-pointed star-shaped tile served as a music, I don't know if that's a typo, but embodying the intersection of precision and fluidity, each point echoes the rhythmic grace of a dancer's movement capturing the choreography in geometric form. The synthesis of art and motion invites viewers to dance within its design. So, go ahead and see that.
You could also ask Daryl about his trip to Boston, because I think he walked, like,
150,000 steps as well and lost, like, 10 pounds. So he was sending me pictures every day to test me if I knew what the different things were in Boston, and what he didn't know is I had to Google a couple of them to remember what they were, so. But I think, I think what we just want to reiterate is that, one, we have a pretty thorough process. Like, I ask advisors quite a few questions. Bonnie knows this, and Daryl knows this, because they get copied on every single email. So when a proposal comes in, like, if I'm, you know, if I feel like somebody is, why do you have a whole day? I don't feel like this agenda is full enough, or I don't feel like there's an educational objective here, I need some more information. And they really do get quite irritated at me with how many questions I ask. But it's interesting because we're able to either consolidate the trip and make it more meaningful, or they're able to say, oh, I didn't explain, this is what happens, this tournament isn't finished until this time, or those pieces. And I think sometimes these more expensive trips that are going places like Boston or New York or San Francisco or those, those locations, I think our students are really experiencing quite a bit in terms of their education, rather than, I'm going to a competition that's in Florida, and we get to go to Disneyland for, you know, Disney World for a day. Those things are also great, they build teamwork and that type of thing, but some of these trips, they're very, very well thought out and planned, and pretty tremendous experiences for our students. So hopefully that just gives you kind of a little glimpse of what we're providing for students here in Provo City.
Thank you. I know it's awkward, because normally we're around the board table for the study session. So remember, if you guys have questions, input, this is our study session. Does anyone have any, anything they want to say before we move on to the next item? Go ahead.
I just, thanks. It's really great to be able to see these little snippets of kind of some of these trips and making that part of this report. It's awesome, so.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to our next item, which is our end-of-year data. I'll turn it back over to Wendy.
Okay. So if you'll pull, actually, can I just take over the screen? Is that okay? Not that, will it, oh, it's going to let me take it over there, that's very exciting. Okay, let's see here. There we are. Okay, so I was told to try to make this so that all of us as fifth graders could understand all of these different pieces. So I also attached in board docs a document called Key Takeaways, but I'm going to go through that, kind of as I walk you through some of these slides, so that it will, I think, focus us in on what the most important pieces are. So the first thing that Nate Mitchell wanted us to share is that our correlations with NWEA and our state summative assessment, so this would be our RISE, so this isn't decadence, but this would be RISE and ASPIRE Plus, so our third through 10th grade remains really strong. Notice that in, for ASPIRE Plus, it goes down, and for ACT, that correlation goes down as well. That's because those tests are kind of testing accumulation of all of the skills that you've learned up to that particular point, whereas the other tests are standards-based, and the NWEA is matching up with those particular standards. So it's still a high correlation, it's just less so as we go through it. So I don't know what a Z-score is, Melanie could probably explain this way better than I could, but I am going to try to walk you through just what this means. So when it says, when it's saying that, for example, your NWEA percent predictor score means that if I'm scoring a 62, is that predictor score that you need to have, then NWEA predicted that 45% of the students were scoring at that 62, okay? So 45% were going to pass the RISE math test, and what came back at as 44.8%. So he's just trying to show that it's pretty close. With science, it tells you that that score needs to be 67. With that, 50% of the students were scoring that, and we had a pass rate of 49.6%. Notice with ASPIRE Plus that that percentage gets less, right? So it's not as good of a predictor here. So the predictor score was a 79 for math, for ASPIRE Plus, for ninth and 10th grade. It predicted a passage rate of 37.6%, and we only had a 31.3%. So you're noticing that that isn't quite there. Same thing, you kind of see that with science. With ACT math, it's closer, and ACT reading, our actual pass rates were a little bit higher. However, he did want to point out that the ASPIRE Plus is a pretty good indicator of how students are going to do on the ACT. So that's the one benefit of it, but it really, he feels like we're going to be in a better situation because the state is moving towards a RISE-type assessment for ninth and 10th graders. We're going to be moving away from ASPIRE Plus, but he just wanted to kind of show that to you. And then he put in a whole bunch of numbers about a predictor of proficiency, and I sent him an email to ask him more questions about this, but I don't, I don't remember all of the data on that, so I'm going to skip that slide and I'll send you an explanation of that. This one is interesting.
So this isn't decadence, but this would be RISE and ASPIRE Plus. So our third through 10th grade remains really strong. Notice that in, for ASPIRE Plus, it goes down and for ACT, that correlation goes down as well. That's because those tests are kind of testing accumulation of all of the skills that you've learned up to that particular point, whereas the other tests are standards-based and the NWEA is matching up with those particular standards. So it's still a high correlation. It's just less so as we go through it. So I don't know what a Z score is. Melanie could probably explain this way better than I could, but I am going to try to walk you through just what this means. So when it says, when it's saying that, for example, your NWEA percent predictor score means that if I'm scoring a 62, is that predictor score that you need to have, then NWEA predicted that 45% of the students were scoring at that 62. Okay? So 45% were going to pass the RISE math test and what came back at as 44.8%. So he's just trying to show that it's pretty close. With science, it tells you that that score needs to be 67. With that, 50% of the students were scoring that and we had a pass rate of 49.6%. Notice with ASPIRE Plus that that percentage gets less, right? So it's not as good of a predictor here. So the predictor score was a 79 for math, for ASPIRE Plus, for ninth and 10th grade. It predicted a passage rate of 37.6% and we only had a 31.3%. So you're noticing that that isn't quite there. Same thing, you kind of see that with science. With ACT math, it's closer and ACT reading, our actual pass rates were a little bit higher. However, he did want to point out that the ASPIRE Plus is a pretty good indicator of how students are going to do on the ACT. So that's the one benefit of it, but it really, he feels like we're going to be in a better situation because the state is moving towards a RISE-type assessment for ninth and 10th graders. We're going to be moving away from ASPIRE Plus. But he just wanted to kind of show that to you. And then he put in a whole bunch of numbers about a predictor of proficiency. And I sent him an email to ask him more questions about this, but I don't, I don't remember all of the data on that. So I'm going to skip that slide and I'll send you an explanation of that. This one is interesting. So this shows math proficiency of RISE. So this would be third, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth grades. And the blue is your 23 scores, orange 24, gray 25. And then it shows you what math was on the NWEA for that year. So you can kind of see there's still some discrepancies that are happening. When we put it all together as a district, those correlations are tighter. When you start breaking it out by grade level, it kind of depends on the grade level. So that just kind of helps you there. The reason our math proficiency rates are not completely solidified is because the state hasn't gone through and combed through all of the data and figured out all of those particular pieces. That won't happen until really November, December of this year. And so to Lisa's question where like, how is this fitting with our strategic plan? We can't compare all of our passage rates and our proficiency rates yet until we get that finalized data. And then we'll create a strategic plan dashboard to say this is where we are and how we're progressing and what that looks like. He did the same thing with science. Notice there's no NWEA scores for science in fourth, fifth, and sixth grade because we did not administer NWEA in science in the elementary schools. Our teachers asked that we just focus on NWEA math at this particular point in time. And then we have, I think these are kind of interesting graphs here. So this shows us district-wide math on NWEA only. So what you're looking at is a growth is at 50th, our growth was across all grade levels was in the 50th percentile. But notice our achievement, when you're, when you're dealing with a 50th percentile, the achievement is pretty static, right? So from the beginning of year, it was at 60, we were in the 62nd percentile, by the end of the year in the 60th percentile. So if we're really going to try to push that achievement, the argument is our growth has to be higher than 60. Like we really have to be pushing that number and really adequately paying attention to that piece of it. When we're just, what we're doing is we're making a year's worth of growth in a year, but that's not what we need if we're going to move those proficiency levels. It has to be higher than that. You'll notice the same thing with reading. So our growth 51st and notice our achievement score, again, static. Also notice that our numbers for reading is much smaller because we did not administer this in elementary schools because we used decadence for this. And so this was administered seventh, eighth, ninth, and 10th grades, I believe. It might have been in 11th grade as well. I can't, I don't remember if they did 11th grade. And then language usage kind of correlates with the English part on the ACT where it's a lot of grammar. Notice 42nd in growth and then 66th, then we actually went down, which you would predict. That growth amount has to be higher. Same, you're seeing in science, we had a 55th with our average growth and again, achievement staying pretty much the same. So science is where we're, we're doing better in terms of our actual performance, but in terms of actually closing those achievement gaps and actually moving students forward, we have work to do, right? That would be a major takeaway that I would say we're seeing here. I asked him to pull up some shout-outs and I think these are really profound and actually can help inform us as we move forward. So you'll look on sixth grade math, it says Timpanogus. Notice that growth of 80, they're in the 81st percentile. Their achievement went from 34th to 46th. So a huge jump there, but notice how high that growth has to be. And then you see Westridge, 72nd, moving from 50th to 64th. So that's kind of the data that we need to start showing our teachers that, you know, focusing on that growth. And then of course, the next question is, well, how do I get that level of growth, right? So that's going to be looking at these teams and saying, what are these teams doing and how do we replicate that? And the thing that's great is we've got Timpanogus, which is a highly, highly impacted school. Then we have Westridge, which is still a diverse school, but not a Title I school. And you notice that we're having success across the board. You're going to see that throughout, that, that our successes are not isolated to East Bench schools or to Title I schools, that we really have these pockets of awesome everywhere. Now we got to start replicating that and pushing that through our whole district. Ninth grade math, I thought this was really great with Timpew, 65th percentile in growth, going from 70th to 77th on achievement, so showing a significant growth there. And then we have eighth grade math at Shoreline in that 64th growth percentile, moving from 43rd to 51st. So, so we know we can do it. So we've got two very different populations between Timpew and Shoreline and our kids are capable. We need to keep, like this idea of, well, they have so many challenges or this school has this, that's not accurate. We really have to change that mindset and that dialogue. Amelia Erhart, I love looking at this one. In third grade math, notice the 73rd in growth, moving from 49th to 63rd. That's like, wow, like off the charts, like just amazing. And then we've got a second grade math team at Edgemont, 75th percentile in growth, growing from 65th to 78th. Like huge, like this is just incredible. Provost, first grade math, 59th to 66th, also 71st growth. Anyway, he just tried to show us some different things, but noticing those growth rates can't just hover around 50. 50 is what gets us a year's worth of growth. We've got to be pushing that 60, 70, 80 if we're going to start really closing those gaps. Any questions about that data first, about end of level data, and then I want to talk a little bit about advanced courses. And then I had Nate Edvilsen pull us some specific special ed data because there was some interesting things there as well. I just wanted to give you a chance to ask any question because this is just such a weird, this is so weird.
So on those shout-outs from the beginning year to end of year, is that all NWEA or is that with the?
It's all NWEA. Yep.
They might have done well in the NWEA, but it's not quite exactly that for their state test.
That's correct. Yep. You'll see that. And you'll see that because that was one of the questions we had in MTSS. Well, if it's showing a 62% achievement rate, why on the RISE is the proficiency still sitting below 50%, right? And so it's not quite there in terms of that correlative piece yet. On our advanced courses, you'll notice that this is just percent of students taking AP or CE courses. When you look at our strategic plan and we're looking at the goals of post-secondary readiness indicators, this is only a fraction of that, of that piece. We're also looking at students meeting ACT benchmarks, our graduation rates, as well as what gets added into this, our completers for CTE pathways. We don't have those numbers from the state as of yet. But noticing that the percent of our students moved from 28% to 41%, and I'm going to talk more about that when I look at, when we, when I pull up Clay's report from UVU because it will show you some different things. This is some data that I thought was interesting that Nate Edvilsen pulled for us. So this is our math information. You'll notice the lighter blue line is our students with, on the summative test, so end of year assessment, with students with disabilities and then a comparison to our overall general population. One of the things that I think is very profound is that that gap between our students with disabilities in math is very narrow in elementary school, but look at how big it gets as you're starting to move towards secondary. And as a matter of fact, we're starting to see some of our special education students making no growth when that happens. So that's something that we have to really look at in terms of how are we preparing our teachers and giving them the resources. One of the things that we've talked about is we've done a really good job as a district of getting ourselves in compliance with a lot of things with special ed. Now the next focus is making sure the instruction is as rigorous and that we have the same expectations for our students with disabilities and know that they can do it with the right scaffolds and supports. You know, Nate is such an outside-the-box thinker. He's like, I feel like if I came in and I hired a teacher for kindergartners and first graders and they came in for six weeks in the summer, I could start closing those gaps really quickly in math and they, and I could catch them up by third grade. And I was like, that would be incredible. And he goes, and I don't think it would, he goes, and Devon doesn't even need to panic. It wouldn't cost that much money. I think it would be about $10,000. Like he had it all worked out. Like he was trying not to create angst for anybody, but just that kind of outside-the-box thinking of not, how do we look at this and put more on the teachers, but are there some other pieces that we can put in place to bridge that gap? You'll see, same thing is happening with the ACT, noticing those scores of our students with disabilities below 15 and our general ed population sitting just above a 19. Reading is actually even a bigger gap. So we noticed some significant issues with reading and so that's going to require much more intensive pieces. One of the things that we started looking at with our end of year data is that we're doing better in math to close some of those gaps and to start moving in the right direction. Reading, we're still struggling with some of those pieces. So those are some serious questions that we have to ask of what's happening with those things. And then this is our reading score. Notice that our students that don't have disabilities are well above 20 and our students with disabilities are below 15. And then we have science and there's less of a gap there. We can make all sorts of conclusions about, is it because it's more hands-on? Is it because it's, you know, what's happening there? And so that would be like, what's happening in science that's allowing students to access that where with reading and math, that's not happening nearly as readily. So. And then this shows our ninth graders and our 10th graders on our ASPIRE Plus, notice that that gap is less also here. So science is, is doing a pretty good job. But when you look at the ACT, again, those ACT scores are definitely lower for students with disabilities. So any questions about that segment of data? Okay. I wanted to, I won't, I don't think I'm going to pull up Clay's things, but let me just tell you some of the overall takeaways that we have just from this information. And when you look at our district-wide data, we're not moving that achievement number. And so if we're going to meet our strategic plan goals, we have to meet those proficiency levels and we're only going to do that if we get those higher growth rates. So part of this, one of the things that, as I was talking with Michelle Eldridge and Nate Mitchell, our schools that show the greatest ability to close those gaps are Provost, Westridge, and Timpanogus. And those schools are really doing everything K6. It really, they're really addressing it as a system. There's really some non-negotiables in place about progress monitoring, what that's supposed to look like. And we were even talking, as Jason and I were talking with Michelle today, we're talking about how do we not overwhelm the teachers? What does this look like? And I, and I want to kind of dispel some, as we get into some decadence data, kind of dispel some misunderstandings about why we have some different assessments and what that looks like. So some of our next steps, just really analyzing the success of our teams, figuring out what can we replicate, allowing our teachers to learn from each other rather than always like curriculum people, not that there's anything wrong with people who specialize in curriculum, they're very important, but seeing the teachers do it in action. And so that's going to be really key. And then creating the time for the teachers to collaborate. And we're working through that by using our Friday PLC time to provide that, to learn from those who are having success. When we look at our concurrent enrollment information, so I uploaded a report that came from UVU. A couple of things that are some key takeaways from that particular data, our number of students taking CE courses has increased tremendously. I think that's also because Timpew's put a significant emphasis on that where they were really focusing on AP before. AP is really great if you're applying to BYU. It's really great if you're applying to out-of-state schools, but if you're going to a state-run institution, which a majority of our students attend, then the CE courses are a way to really start recognizing that you can be successful in college. So we had almost 1,200 students across the two high schools taking almost 2,900 courses of concurrent enrollment with a savings of 2.2 million in tuition costs. And our enrollment is trending up because both high schools have put into their school improvement plan, the goal to increase the numbers of students that are taking advanced coursework, completing those courses and seeing how they can benefit from them. And so they're aligning that with the strategic plan. I think the next step of that is making sure we're getting students into the CE courses that are going to be of greatest benefit, right? Don't just take a CE course because it's a CE course, but how is this actually going? Like what are you interested in? How does this actually benefit you? I think one of our big steps is now looking at Wasatch School District where they have been able to replace Secondary III, Math III with the actual concurrent enrollment 10-10 and either 10-30, 10-40, or 10-10 and 10-50, so that students are leaving high school having finished their basic math requirements. Then only if they're going into an engineering field or something do they have to continue math after that. That will be a game changer. If we can, because math is the number one reason why kids are not finishing. So like when we were talking with Senator Mikel and he was saying, I don't like this emphasis on CE because it's not resulting in higher graduation rates. It's because we're not putting the emphasis in the right areas of CE. And if we get that targeted and get our kids over that hump of math, it will, it will revolution, I guarantee it, it will revolutionize it. So we should be in good shape to start asking for that pilot to be extended into the entire UVU partnership so that not for this fall, but for the following fall, we can start offering those concurrent enrollment math courses and be offering that. So that's going to be a major emphasis and we have Clay's help with that. And then I uploaded a whole bunch of spreadsheets about decadence data that, that came in. And so I just, I'm going to break this down really quickly because there was a ton of data on those sheets. And I said to Michelle, I said, there's a lot of numbers. I'm not really sure. I mean, I can come up with some general things. And then if you want more specifics, I would love for you to just come and set an appointment with me and Michelle and Nate and let's just sit down and, and go through all the questions that you have. Love to do that. If students are entering proficient, we keep them proficient. The area of our greatest concern in reading is that when a student is below benchmark or well below benchmark, we are not pushing them. That number needs to be as high as we can get it. We're not even hitting that 80% threshold. So we're really struggling to move them along. And we need to do some more digging in that data. Is this because of attendance issues? So let's pull out those, because that's going to be frustrating to a teacher, right? Kid misses 80 days and you're holding me accountable for the fact that the kid stays well below benchmark? Let's pull those kids out and look at the kids that are there every day and look at what, what can we do to help support that student better? And I think that will actually help the teachers see that they're probably a lot more effective than they even think they are in that process. And so that will help motivate them that all of the work that they're doing is actually paying off. So, so one of the things that, and that's, let me back up. That's actually true, our below benchmark and well below benchmark students in both reading and math, we're having, we're struggling to close that gap. I do think in math, our tier-one instruction has improved tremendously. You are seeing improvements. I don't know if you watched that, that trend line that was coming over the past three years in math. We're definitely moving in the right direction. I think that's also because our early learning plan goals focus more on the math piece. But some of our next steps that we need to think about is, one, how do I take this data now and then take it on an individual student level and look at the class that I have coming in, look at their attendance and give them some real-time data so that they know how to intervene with those students and what specific processes need to be in place. To Michelle and Judy's comment, we feel like based on the successes that we've had with teams, we know what to do to fill the gaps. We know how to do it. We know what works. We just have to help our teachers and our principals understand what that is and help them manage the stresses that are coming from that. So clearly there are some barriers or frustrations. So how do we help them talk with other teachers and work through those processes? But basically, we do need to have some standardization of how we're intervening because we're seeing success at a variety of schools, students who have tremendous challenges and a lot of behavior issues and we're still able to make tremendous, have tremendous success with that. Michelle is a, she, she's like Jennifer, she has really high goals. So she said, aim for 100% of the students to make their individual growth goals because if you aim for 100%, she said, it's not good enough to get 80%. That's fine, but then we're still falling short 20%. She goes, I just can't in good conscience sit there and be like, well, 20% are just not going to make it. She goes, we're starting with a deficit mindset. Understand what the individual growth goal is of every student and be working to monitor that and figure out how to help them meet that growth goal. Make sure the student knows what that goal is and make sure the parent knows what that goal is so that they're buying into what it is. And I think if they're understanding what that goal is, that might also help us. Like every day your kid is gone, that's a day I can't hope them. Like this is, like we're doing really good stuff here. And so hoping that all of that can come together and support our students. And then one of the things that we get asked a lot is, why do I have to do decadence reading and math and say NWEA? Why can't I just do decadence for lower grades and NWEA? And so this is, this is how Michelle and Judy explained it and I thought this was very helpful. very helpful. She said, "If I am blue in Acadia's," which means I am well above proficiency in Acadia's, "it means I can read, I have the skill to read, and I can compute. It means I can access the core. It doesn't mean I know the standards. The NWEA gives us the tools to be able to determine if a teacher's common formative assessments are actually matching the rigor that those standards require." And so it's about trying to help them manage that time, because it is a lot of time, and it feels, regardless of, you can put up and say, "Well, it's only 2% or it's only 3%." It just feels overwhelming, right? So it doesn't really matter what the number says. It's, how do we help manage that and work through that process? But those schools, like when I'm looking at, in particular, Westridge and Tempanogus, it's because there is a true understanding of that piece, of why those two tests are so important and how they're providing that different, those different components of data. And so the other types of assessments are actually helping us understand, their understanding of the actual standards in ELA and math, not just the prerequisite skills to be able to do those standards. And I was like, "Okay." This is, you know, so in her mind, it's like, if somebody comes in and we do beginning-of-year data and they're blue in Acadia's, you don't need to keep testing them in Acadia's. They're probably just fine. You're just going to move on and start working through reading comprehension. And she said, "If they're green," she goes, "I would still do a middle-of-year. I would not be progress monitoring them every two weeks. I would not be putting them in an intervention group. We're not, we're not doing those pieces. We're trying to enrich them. As soon as they test blue, they don't, they don't need to be tested anymore." We haven't given that kind of flexibility to our principals. We've kind of said, "It's all or nothing." We need to be a lot more individualized and say, "Okay, let's take a look at your data. How are you going to analyze this?" And I think that will help ease the stress a little bit as we recognize that we have this goal that we're trying to achieve, but we're, we are trying to, to really look at the individual needs of each of our schools. And I appreciate our team, and really, I feel like they're listening in that respect and trying to help in those areas. So what other questions can I answer for you in this process? And I think I'm ahead of time. Am I ahead of time? Because I'm so excited. Oh, yes. And I have Nate here because I was worried that I was going to, this is Nate Edgelson, our special ed director. He's kind of a data nerd. And so then I thought, if you ask me a question I didn't know the answer to, then Nate could probably answer it for me. And he could be smart.
Nate, did you have a question?
I just have a comment. I did, I had a sixth grader last year at Tempanogus, and my, and watching her, the way that, it was very intentional, she had, she was in control of her goals and what needed to be done. There was very specific things she had to do every night. It wasn't like a ton of homework, but she just knew where she was in math and what she needed to get. It was really great, and sometimes it was a little stressful for her.
[laughing]
But I think, yeah, I just, it was different than I had seen in the past. And I was like, "Oh, wow, you were in the driver's seat of what's happening." And she knew when she was working with those teachers, knowing what she needed to do to move on to the next step or level.
Yeah. Go ahead, Lisa.
I was just going to add, like, I really, I went and talked for a little while with Michelle and saw, like, the MTSS supports for things like math, and it's really worth it to go sit and understand the tools that we really do have and are offering to teachers to use, to be able to take this data and then use the data to first identify which tools will help that child the most, and I'm really grateful for that. And I feel like, if we're going to talk about those concurrent enrollment math classes, we have to look pretty hard at our math data, because offering those classes, if our students aren't prepared for them, you know, will just increase everyone's frustration. And so I'm just grateful that we're using this data now to inform that, and I hope it will inform how we spend the money and where our budgeting goes as we're looking at strategic plans and those key performance indicators to see, like, is this goal still a reasonable goal or not? Do we need to change that? Is the way we're measuring what we're doing in this area really measuring what we think it's measuring? But then also, do we have the right system of supports, and are we willing to shift funds to pay for those? Because this is most important. So anyway, thank you. I think this is great.
So I have two questions. My first one is, I love seeing the NWEA, like, and when we were at, Jennifer and I would go to the Tim Fu Trustlands and our community council meetings, and they would show us the results, and it was really cool to see that. Are we seeing a buy-in from more of the schools?
I think, I think so. I think you're, I think you're especially seeing that more at the secondary level, and I think you'll see it more as we get more data, and you can start to see some trend lines with the students. So right now, I just have three data points with a student. Imagine if at the end of next year, now I'm getting six data points with a student, so I can start to see where they're trending and what's happening and where their hiccups are. So I think right now, it's more about, I don't think anybody is saying, and maybe I'm wrong in this, but I don't think most people are saying, "This data isn't helpful." It's, is it more helpful than the time I'm spending to instruct? And so what you always have to weigh is, how do I help the teacher, how do I help the teacher manage, not even understand, they understand that, but how do I help them brainstorm how to balance those things so that it doesn't feel like we're overly assessing, but at the same time that we're, that we're gathering the data so their instruction can be more effective? I think what I was sometimes frustrated with as a teacher is, "Well, okay, I got this data, but I don't actually, I don't think anybody's given me the tools to figure out how to change my instruction to fix that number that you just gave me." So that becomes a really important piece, too.
Thank you. So my second question was, when you were bringing up the special needs, and you were saying we see a big gap between kindergarten through K through six and then getting to secondary level. So from my own son's experience, once we hit seventh grade, he, like, the services fell off.
Oh.
So I'm, I'm just curious if that's something that we're noticing in the district, because that was something that I noticed with my own son's experience, was that, oh, we get to seventh grade, oh, they're fine, they don't need these services anymore. So.
Or they get speech, like, once a month for 30 minutes or whatever that is.
Yeah.
I know that's hard, but right when language takes this huge jump in complexity, you know, and you're layering in so many different kinds of clauses and figurative language in every core subject, that's also when it's harder to figure out how to provide enough of those supports and measure that there is still a need and that students' IEP should re-qualify.
Yes. I would just be curious to know, like, take our sixth graders to seventh grade, and what supports did they lose?
Yeah. Did you write that down, Nate? Doesn't need to write it down, it's in his brain.
I have one more question.
So Lisa?
I just am thinking about when, at Tim Fu Community Council, when they were so excited about the concept of the NWEA because they didn't have data for their incoming ninth grade students. It just sort of stuck with me that if I'm a teacher at really any level, it would be really helpful to have my specific class's data to the extent that I can, before day one, when they come in my room. So I just was curious to ask, kind of, what, what, how does that happen in this district? Or kind of, what are the, what could we do to give that, if possible, to teachers regarding their incoming students?
Great question. I think several of our principals are working through that as they work through their professional learning before the start of school. So now that we're getting these data sources, like, and Daryl, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think, like Shoreline, they were going through and getting data on the reading scores of their students. Now that they already have this, because they, they did that data dive once they had done NWEA, right? Now they have some exit data. They'll get the beginning of your data, be able to compare that, but they'll still have an idea of, "Oh, this kid's going to struggle." Michelle has also put together a really detailed, I don't know what you would call, I would call it almost a dashboard of every single ML student and where they are in terms of their speaking, their writing, their listening. And she's done it so that I could just be like, "Hey, can you put that together for my class?" And they'll list all of your ML students and exactly where they are and where they're going to struggle. And just even knowing that from the outset is a totally different place than I think we were a little, a little while ago. So this is, that's one of the things I put on the key takeaways is, can we now, now that we have this data, can our teachers now see their class list and say, "Okay, now I can go in and I can start looking at not only RISE scores, but I can look at what happened with NWEA. If they have those particular things, I can look at Acadia's. I can start to see, these are going to be some of the things that are going to struggle, where they're going to struggle, especially if they're moving from one level to the next." I think it'll be powerful.
So can you clarify, does someone have to put that together for every class?
Yes.
Or there's, there's not just a dashboard? They can go pull their own class?
No, not right now. But there will be very, very soon.
Okay.
We're going to be able to dive in, and so then when those students are, are loaded into your class, you'll be able to dive in, and it will have your RISE data, your Aspire data, your ACT data, behavior data. It'll have all of that through Domo. But that's, that's going to take us about a year, 18 months to build all of that out. So.
That'll be so helpful.
It'll be awesome.
I had a question. So you were saying some of our takeaways and what next steps, I guess, that we want to do. We know what to do, it's just supporting the teachers. How are we getting that message out in a systemic way? Because I feel like so far, we've just been, "Hey, we're here, let us know how we can help you."
I think you're right.
But how do we set those expectations and those systems for the teachers and support them in what we know are the best practices?
I think that's a great question. I think one is going to be, to start rolling that out through our district days for professional learning, but also giving principals the tools for, so that the same message is going out from every, for every single principal. I mean, it's one of the things, you know, we noticed is that just creating almost like a toolkit of resources for principals as they're trying to lay out, like, this is what we need to make sure every teacher knows and is understanding and what the expectations are. I think for the first time, we're really starting to see them dive into the school improvement plan. The expectation is those building leadership teams are going to have to be monitoring that. So we're going to be giving the NWEA. When beginning-of-year Acadia's comes, building leadership team needs to look through that data and start combing through and saying, "Okay, what's happening and how are we doing this? And where do we need professional learning? And what, and what help do we need?" So it is going to come more, not just the principal telling you that this is what has to happen, but hopefully that the building leadership team will start to see that data and say, "This is what we need to help our kids. Can we, what school is doing well? Let's go check them out. Let's go visit with that, you know, grade-level team." And then you'll have that buy-in that's coming from kind of the groundswell instead. That's the hope.
All right.
Go ahead, Terry.
This all looks like the same stuff that we learned when I went to the, at the beginning of the month with the school leadership training. So I, I want to say I'm really grateful that it's, everybody's getting the same information. I know in the past that it was more like, well, some people get this information, and other people get this information. I'm glad everybody's getting the same information. Everybody's getting the same details. Parents can watch this, and you're getting the same information that the teachers are getting and the principals are getting. Everybody's getting the same thing, because before it just felt like, oh, we're, only certain people get to have the details.
Yeah, I agree. We're getting there. And some, and sometimes the information we're getting, we don't, I don't like to look at, but [laughing], but that's okay. Like, it's all right, we'll get through it. Any other questions? Thanks for being here, Nate. Nate, did you want to add anything? You can come forward to the microphone.
Come up to the mic just for the video.
I have one more question.
Oh, please.
So with Tim Fu's community council, we noticed that the CE and AP went way up, but that was also due to what they did in Trustlands. So is this something that we want to look at maybe with Provo High doing as well?
Yeah.
To encourage that?
And they, and they already have a pretty high CE participation rate. We probably need to put in place some more supports to just be like, you might need a lab class or some different, like, you can absolutely do this. Kids get afraid when it's going to go on their transcript, right? That starts to create some of this, but if they know that they have those teacher supports, that's a big deal. But I know they've written that into their school improvement plan, so I'll need to look at that to see what money that they've appropriated for that, but I would bet.
Will you remind us what that was, what Tim Fu's SEC did? So they took a big chunk of it, and they wanted every single student to have an opportunity to do CE or AP or some sort of CAS, CAPS program or something like that, and the, the school paid the fees.
Community council money for ninth grade AP test.
Yeah, ninth grade AP.
And then all the CE classes.
Yeah.
All right, Nate.
Go ahead, Nate.
Thank you. Yeah, just to speak a little bit to Board Member Hall's kind of questions around that transition period, I think there's a couple of things that I've noticed trend-wise for the last years that I've been involved in special education. I'm sure that we have some commonalities here, we probably have some uniqueness as well, that we'll continue to dig in the data. I didn't get too in-depth into the data that I'd like to normally do, this is just a comparison. I think it's nice to do a comparison because it gives you a sense of the disparity and maybe how we want to reprioritize our funding. So there's a couple insights I'll just mention and move on, but there's a couple of things I think we need to do. Number one, I think we've put a lot of focus and emphasis on the science of reading in the elementary grades, which is awesome, but I don't think that the secondary teachers, at least special education-wise, are benefiting the same. I think we need to really focus in on some of that skillset and understanding, but then, of course, what that looks like in a transition stage. And also then, I think, more focus on the breaking down some of the basic reading skills that you need in a secondary setting, like multi-syllabic words, looking at roots, suffixes, prefixes, all that different kind of stuff that will help. So we've got some really good things that I think we'll be talking about and discussing. I think we also, in our department, need to do a much better job of shifting away from compliance, although we love compliance, it's our favorite thing, to instruction. We really do need to focus in on instruction, because that's where we're going to get the best bang for our bucks. So our specialists need to really, we need to come up with ways to encumber them, unencumber them with that and really get them focused in in the classroom. Our specialists, a lot of them have 30 years' experience, and they're spending time doing clerical, and we really need to be focused on instruction. I did see a really interesting trend that just made me go, huh, and I, I'll definitely talk with the superintendent and see a little more about it, but in the, in those early years, I do think we, we would be wise to consider in the reading area, especially you see this, I had to represent it this way, there wasn't any other way to represent it from the data that made sense to me. But it's not that they are reading backwards or like they're losing it, it's that they're starting at what we, on the leg sale level, you start at zero and gain, and then below that is some real specific skillsets that are below reading identifiers. So I think with that large gap, you start to see, it gets caught up about third grade, which is great. We're still quite behind, and it just keeps tracking. I think if we were putting some really intensive instruction up front in that K through two, and I think if we even considered an extended school year program, which we already spent some dollars into, but maybe making it more robust and targeted, we might be able to make some substantial improvement there. And then I, as I mentioned, you'll notice in that sixth grade, we get pretty stagnant, which is kind of your experience, and I think there's a lot to do with perhaps, again, that science of reading and those strategies, understanding of how the phonemics, the phonology, and all those things still have interplay and how we're matching our interventions to those deficits. So I think this is an area that we're going to be focused on over the next year, and I think, I think we'll see some improvements out the shoot. I'm pretty excited about the opportunity, so. Anyway, sorry to take more of your time.
No, you did great. Thank you.
Didn't think I'd do so.
Nate, we're excited to have you as our new special ed director and to keep working on supporting those students, so. All right, let's move on to the next agenda item, which is CSI status and the state report related to Franklin Elementary.
Yeah.
And CSI is comprehensive school improvement.
Yeah. So this is just an update, so this will be super fast. In the past, they have given us access to a consultant that comes in, observes classes, they create reports, they help a team. There's a specific construct of what that team has to consist of, and then they're uploading that information to the state and reporting it to the state. Part of what creates that problem a little bit is sometimes those consultants will end up focusing on like four or five or six or seven goals, which can be very overwhelming, and it feels like the school is listening to two masters at the same time. So they'll have the consultants that are coming in, which are representative of the state, and then the district has its own agenda. So now what's happened is they pulled that and.
Can you clarify it? They?
Oh, great question. The state has pulled that. And so what they're saying is, I think, I think it's actually quite good. So I'm not upset about this at all. I think this is a real positive thing. So the piece of this is that the district is supposed to put together a support team that will support Franklin Elementary instead. And so we've identified that team as Jason, myself, Jared, Michelle, Nate, our double Nates, because we have Nate Mitchell and Nate Edelson. Also, probably Carrie Rollins to help with behavior. And as they're going through those goals, then the idea is, is that we're meeting with them once a month, and then they'll still have their 90-day plans and we'll be reporting that up to the state. So Michelle will help with that process. But it really is the idea of, that we're coming together, we're looking at their school improvement plan, we're adjusting as we need to, like, as we progress monitor what types of resources do we need to put into the school, how can we further help. It will help us also to be, really ensure that, that sometimes you get so many people that want to go in and help, it just ends up sending multiple messages. And so it will really filter those messages through this particular system so that we can work on a walkthrough tool for, say, a literacy block lesson, what a math lesson is supposed to look like, what classroom procedures and routines are supposed to look like, and we're all speaking the same language as district support as well. So that's what we're moving towards. So that, those reports are still there, there's still, there's still people at the state office that are willing to help us and support us with different things, they're just not assigning us a specific consultant group to come in, and I actually think that's going to be a better situation, so.
I did notice when I was reading all the school improvement plans, everybody had like one or two or three, and Franklin had five and six, and I'm like, that's too much.
Yeah.
It's too much, especially with all the changes that are going to be happening. Five is too many things to be working on.
Yeah. So what Brooke has done is when they met with their building leadership team, they went and scaled that school improvement plan down, and so I believe they're at three goals now. They have a behavior goal, a math goal, and a literacy goal. They're uploading that to the state this week. Michelle and Brooke are going to be sharing that with school leadership. So I'll share that with you as well, Terry, just so that you can see kind of the adjustments that they've made to really streamline it. And then that gives them access to their CSI funding. So that money's still going to come through from the state. It's just, it's just we're monitoring it more and showing our progress rather than an outside agency, which I actually think is a lot better, so.
Okay, good, because as long as we're still getting the money.
Yeah, yeah, we still want the money, yeah.
Because we need it.
I just said that, yeah, out loud.
Yeah, and isn't it true that every school's school improvement plan is on their website, right? For parents or anyone listening who wants to see their schools.
Yes, yes. It eventually will all be there by the, yes, yes.
It will be.
Yes.
And then I just, will you just remind me, I'm sorry that I, I should know this. When does, when do we get the data and the state's determinations of schools that are in improvement or district status?
Great question. So it used to come in November, it will now come in January, so that's super helpful. And they only identify CSI status every three years, so this will be a year where they are identifying if a school is, this will be the first year that Franklin could exit or, or other schools could be identified as CSI. I don't think we're in, I'm not worried about that piece, but, so.
All right, any other questions? All right, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is for Devin, for some large purchase requests.
So there are, excuse me, two purchase requests for, one is for the boiler at Amelia. It's, this is for in next year's project list in the HVAC, but because it's over the 50,000, we are bringing it to you just for information. The other one is for a mini excavator. Our mini excavator died while tearing down the portable down at Dixon. If you look at the great big piles of oil or the stains on, that's the mini excavator dying. And they have, they've patched it so many times, it's about 20 years old. It costs about $2,600 a week to rent one. And so, and the reason that the, the bid or the, the motion in the business meeting is up to $71,000, we're in the process of getting approval from the state to go, so the company that we have is a state contract company, but when we asked for a bid off of state contract, it was less than the state contract. But because it's over the 50,000, the state would require us to go for a sealed bid for the, for the excavator, even though it's on state contract, but to save $5,000, we'd have to do a sealed bid. So we're in the process of getting approval to accept the lower bid from the same company who is the state contract. So it's kind of silly rules that the state has on the purchasing side. So when you see the, the motion up to $71,000, that, that's why.
Okay, questions for Devin?
Maybe, maybe I missed this, but how old is the boiler at Amelia? Is it original?
I think it's the original one, yes.
Yeah, because the school was built in 1999.
Yes, so it is, and it's in the, it's in that 25-year range of needing to be replaced. So we're trying to do it on more of a, of a schedule. So the irony of this is we talked about whether to put it on a schedule or wait for it to die. And, you know, the theoretical idea of when you're in your home, you kind of wait for it to die and then you fix it. Well, I got home from the meeting and my air conditioner was dead. So it was one of those things.
That was her exact example of how in a home you wait, but in a school you don't wait, and it just jinxed it.
But the irony of the whole thing was rather humorous. So this is just one of those things that's in the rotation cycle, that we're trying to get really good at making sure that we're rotating them on the appropriate years so that we don't have it die and then have either hot or cold students. So, there you go.
Sleeping with their parents. It's a lot different when there's 500 students there and probably a lot harder to, and more time-consuming to replace the boiler than a home.
Oh, absolutely. There is no question. It is still dead, because I can't get anybody to come look at it. So we're in the process. One side of my house is cool though, so it's.
As I say, at least it's been cold lately. All right, any other questions? All right, we will be voting on that in the business meeting later tonight. Okay, we will turn it back to Wendy for some policy.
Oh, I love me some policies. Okay, we're going to start with policy 3325. These policies have not gone before policy committee because we didn't hold a policy committee last week, and then I was at the superintendent's conference. So traditionally, the policies do go to policy committee first. We had some time allotted on the agenda, so we brought them here and we can have a discussion. We'll take it back to policy committee. It'll go out on the website, and then these policies would be up for review, say, in the first meeting of September. So we have some time with it.
Not August?
Not August, no. So we'll, yeah, we'll wait till, because we want them to be up for a full month on the, on the website, so. And I want policy committee to meet, to take into account the feedback that we get from today, and then we'll go forward from there. And policy committee, we don't want to meet until the first week of August.
Good point.
Yeah. Okay, so policy 3325 is called equal educational opportunities, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna start with Lisa's questions that she sent and then try to work through those, and then as you have additional questions, there might be some I can't answer, and I'll get those. Part of the reason why this policy exists, and it's different from policy 3214, is we are required to have a policy that basically states that we provide equal opportunities based on Title IX. 3214 is when we're dealing with discrimination, harassment, someone's being denied their rights in terms of their employment or as a student. This is more about access to facilities, to, to their actual education itself and, and those specific pieces. And so, and the reason why, she asked a question about, why in line 14 do we only talk about on the basis of sex? It's because that is the Title IX piece that is required that we have in our policy. But we do want to still reiterate that we are providing, you know, that we don't discriminate regardless, like, but that is specific to Title IX. And then one of the questions is, so let's see if I can find the line number. It talks about down on lines 35, where it starts talking about that you have sex-designated facilities and we do not discriminate based on, on anyone being able to participate in a particular sport. And so there have come some questions about, well, wait a second, we don't allow transgendered athletes to compete, say, and they have to compete in the sport that is designated by their sex. They still consider that, under state law, equal opportunity because we're not denying you the opportunity to participate. You just have to participate based on your sex instead. And so that would be their, so if we want to, if we need to tweak that language somehow, we could, I would probably want us to run that by Joan and go through our attorney on that, as this policy came from the state itself. But what other questions can I answer about this particular policy? It does state who our Title IX coordinator is, retaliation is prohibited. You'll notice there's a lot of crossover between 3214 and this particular policy. 3214 goes into much more detail about what happens when these things are reported. And then this one is also talking about confidentiality, that we can't keep information from parents, that's not allowed, but we also can't disclose information without parent permission about someone's gender identity or things like that that are taking place. Other questions that you might have? Please, no, go ahead, Lisa, please.
Just a suggestion for down the road, for maybe policy committee to look at policy 3214, does, there's maybe an inconsistency around naming who the person is you go to for help? So I think we just want to make sure we're using the same language.
We have, we have 3214 under review with Joan, and she's supposed to get that back to us. She's been reviewing. Policy is not, with everything that she deals with, that's not the thing that's, so we just need to put some more pressure on her to get that back to us.
I'm just curious if it needs a different, an adjusted title then? Because equal opportunities makes you think that it's going to be for everyone, and then this is only based on sex and gender, so.
It does have a little section on disabilities.
It does.
We could change it to.
As well as race, culture, family. Or do we change some of the wording in it to reflect everything, right? Not just, but most of it is about the Title IX.
It is.
So how, how can we better align that and reflect that or give the policy committee more work? And how do we just combine the ideas of this one with our other policies about treating everyone equally and have it all in one place instead of looking for it in several places?
I'm just writing notes, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, you're good. And then I also just didn't give it much thought to be helpful on how to do this, but policy committee could consider that paragraph that does start on line 35. As I read through it, I had to slow down and say, wait, didn't I just read that sentence? And realized that there are just several words that change, like, we're not providing a difference of the facility, then the next one's about the scheduling, like, is there a way?
But we could do it in a list form.
Yeah, is there a way you can just list it and not be so wordy? Make it easier to read. Anybody else have any feedback?
I, you know, under the Title IX coordinator, I don't know how to say this, but like, employees change jobs all the time, and, you know, it says right now, if you're having an issue, go to Jason Cox if you're an employee, but that might not be his responsibility in a year from now, or, or, I don't know how to fix it, so you are going to the right person, and do we list the right person and?
I will, I will double-check, but I think you actually do have to list the name of the person, and so that is something that we have to go through, which is what Lisa was talking about with 3214, it's, it's listing the wrong individual on that policy. So that's something that we just need to pay attention to as we update. But I'll find out for sure if we have to actually list the name or just the title of the person. I'll find that out.
And just remember that when these change, this policy has to be updated every single time.
Maybe we need to just keep a list of those, like, there are the policies that have to change that refer to names. That's actually not a bad idea.
Anybody else? I did wonder, for this policy, we don't have a list of definitions for some of those terms that we're using there, but we do have it in our 7050, some of the other ones that we're doing, and so I don't know if that's helpful for this policy or not, but I'd be curious to hear if other board members feel like that should be included, because in other places, we do, we do define sex, we do define gender identity, et cetera, and so I just, I don't know.
Do we have definitions in 3214?
We do, not in 3214.
We have one in, in gender inclusive.
Gender inclusive policy.
Yeah, there's quite a few, yeah.
And maybe we don't need them, I just wondered.
That's it.
I think that might be a good thing for the policy committee to take a look at.
Okay. Next policy, I don't know if I'm doing these in the right order, hold on, let me look here. 3360 is a policy about updating for juvenile offenders. I know it looks like that lines 34 are repeating line 20, starting at line 20, but it actually isn't. So if you look at line 20, it says, within three days of receiving a notification from juvenile court or a law enforcement agency that a student has been taken into temporary custody for a serious offense. And then in line 34, it says that you have been adjudicated for a serious offense. So they want those very specifically separated out as two separate things. I think what we could do is we could say, since those things are identical, we could say that a student of the district has been taken into temporary custody for a serious offense or adjudicated. That would certainly simplify the policy. I don't, I don't think that, because everything else is exactly the same.
Or a notification that they've been adjudicated, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know.
Any other questions on this? This is just talking about, we already have a policy on a reintegration plan. It's just really making sure that we're providing that reintegration plan and that we're also acknowledging that while we don't want this information to become like widespread, there might be individuals who need to know. In particular, if you have a student who's had a violent offense, a teacher probably does need to know that and be aware of that and know how to manage that and what to do in, in specific situations, and so what that might look like. So that's where that multidisciplinary team goes through that and determines who are the need-to-know people in these particular instances.
Was that, because this came from a law update this year, so was that the aspect that was supposed to be changed or what?
The aspect that has changed is that, that you're now being notified if, if, if you have a serious offense and taken into temporary custody versus just being adjudicated. So now it's both of those situations.
So I have a question at the end there. It says, beginning July 1st, 2025. Do we need to change that date? Because we haven't actually officially adopted this by that date.
We'll just say, well, it's still, well, it's going to digitally maintain starting July 1st, 2025, so it should still be okay by the time it goes into effect, so.
I was just going to say, we've discussed this in the safety committee meeting after the bill was passed and, and all the changes that, that the employees need to make to do their job.
Yeah. Our next one, I'm not making this very exciting, I'm really sorry. Okay, 7055 is our policy on conduct on school premises. We do have a civility policy, but this particular policy really kind of guides not only how the public interacts at a school, but also in a public meeting. Defines, for example, how, that it is a modified public forum, so it isn't like a true government building where you can go in and disrupt, that there are specific requirements, like if you want to hold a protest, you don't get to do that in a school and disrupt the educational environment. Talks about the requirements for campus visitors, you can trespass an individual and notify them of that, and they can't disrupt an orderly meeting, they do get a warning, but then after that, all bets are off. And no alcoholic beverages, just so you know. I thought this was weird. Line 167, except as approved by the board as part of the curriculum.
I wondered about that, too.
So that would be like, that would be like a, like, might be foods, it might be a drug and alcohol, like, I'm bringing this in to show you like what advert, I don't know, I would never do that, but. I'm fine if policy committee would like to strike that and just say it's not, like, that might be something that, line 167 might be something the policy committee might need to just kind of explore a little bit more, because I had some issues with that, I wasn't sure. Like, I'm not, does that mean a vanilla extract?
I was like, we're saying no to drugs and vaping and smoking, but we're saying only if it's approved to alcohol, and I was like, maybe there's something I'm not sure.
I don't, I need to ask what that might look like. Like, maybe if it's. Like, maybe if it's a, I don't know.
The draft person.
Yeah. And then notice it has really specific requirements about weapons on school premises and what that looks like in terms of who can carry in a school. And then it's really interesting because they gave us a state law that defines explosive chemical or incendiary device, but they've redefined it, so they haven't put up the new state law that redefined it. So once we have that in August, then we'll put that in online. It'll be on line 208 where that will go in. And then obviously guests are not allowed to use our Wi-Fi for inappropriate means. And then restrictions on the use of sex-designated changing rooms. And give some, notice the restrictions don't apply in certain situations, like if you're dealing with a child and taking them to the restroom, that type of thing. So any questions or comments about this policy? Other than the alcohol.
I, when I went to go look at the civility policy, it's numbered 70, what is it? 7510, and this is.
Do you want this closer to that in the number?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. Should it be that?
I'll bring that up in policy committee.
My main question is, should they be next to each other? Since they're basically working together, these two policies?
That's good.
Good question. Lisa?
Yeah, I did have a question on the restrictions on use of electronic devices, specifically around a parent or someone using a phone, for example, to film an event or something. I don't know how much clarity we can put around that. It's, I guess my question is, are we, we're trying to address the intent.
Yes.
Rather than, because I know that some parents might feel concerned if they feel like something's suddenly happening on a field or a court or in a thing that's troubling, they might get out their phone to video that.
Absolutely.
And I don't feel like this is saying you couldn't do that. But it's saying, I can't pick a kid who I know is giving my kid trouble and come in and film that kid in order to try to gather data to then monitor their behavior or create, do you know what I'm saying? So that's more what this is talking about, right?
Right.
Okay.
But I think we might be able to add some language about what is the intent of what's taking place? What is the person's intent? If the person's intent is, you know, they're posting, that gets hard to identify that, but.
So this is in our community section of policies. Do we have already in our student series of policies, policies that address their use of weapons?
Yes.
And alcohol and things like that?
Yes, yep.
Okay. So I would recommend then, again, maybe we modify the title a little bit. Maybe guest conduct on school premises or something to indicate that this is not about the students. It's about our visitors.
Perfect.
And then as I was reading through it, I, I don't know. It's a fine balance. Maybe this is not necessary. But do we want a statement at the beginning? I think it is in our civility when I read it in a while. But, you know, we welcome guests. We want to have people on our campus. But these are the guidelines, right? Because right now, it just feels very like.
There's the definitions, yes.
Yep. Better be careful. It's just emphasizing that we want to be welcoming.
Okay. Perfect. Policy 3300 is an update to our gender-inclusive schools policy. They had created a separate policy at the state for transgendered students. This actually just fits under this particular policy. And so I haven't had a chance to look at Lisa's questions yet. Did you have any question?
I just had one suggestion that we could talk about, even in policy committee. But I felt like the language being used under definition 11, where they're talking about the gender they know themselves to be or which is also known as their affirmed gender. We haven't kind of, given the definitions above, I thought it would be more consistent to just say more congruent with their gender identity. Because we've already, we clearly defined what we mean by gender identity. And so I just, that was, that was my main suggestion for that.
And did you say some of these things came from a state model policy? Great, thank you.
Anything else?
This sounds silly, but when I read the title of the policy, it sounded like we have all-boys or all-girls schools. So I was like, oh, that's what it's about. No, that's not what it's about. So I didn't, maybe the policy committee can decide whether that needs to be changed or.
Okay.
Not only, only because I have a husband that went to an all-boys school in England, so, and had to wear uniforms. Maybe that's just me, but.
Okay. All right. Our last one is on eligibility and admissions requirements. This is really, it really kind of ties along with enrollment. And we already have an open enrollment policy. We have, you know, what happens when there's a student where the parent isn't a resident? Or what does that look like? And this is just defining kind of what happens for you to be considered a resident. If you have an alternative district of residency, what's happening in those particular requests? And what kinds of documentation that you bring? And then students that are, I think on line 91, it talks about students attending a private human services program. So sometimes what happens is while they're attending a particular program like that, they might be entitled to educational services from our particular school district. And so we're not required to provide it on-site, but we have to provide them access. And we don't necessarily have to provide them transportation unless the IEP team determines that, if there's an IEP that's in place. I had never heard of the, this is the new part of this, about the state superintendent identifying a school as persistently dangerous. Kind of falls under the same guidelines as a Title I school, where if you have, at a Title I school, you have a teacher that's not highly qualified, you have to notify the parents that that teacher's not highly qualified in that particular area. And then the district has to pay for transportation and the parent can choose which school they want to go to. This is kind of a similar type of thing that if the state superintendent identifies that, we clearly don't have any of those situations. But that could be a situation where a student is requesting to go to one of our schools because that happened. But I've never heard of that in Utah County, for sure. And then it also just talks about some of the required documentation. And notice, it gives a little more flexibility if the student is not coming with specific documents because they're a newcomer, they're an immigrant. And so how we're going to identify their age. And so it gives some flexibility as to what we do. This has always been in practice for us here in Provo City School District, but it just outlines that in the policy itself. And then the addition, line 174, distribution of kids for missing child identification program, for making sure there's a process. That's also always been in place. It's just required that that's in our policy. And then how we have to transfer records. You've had situations where schools have refused or withheld records if students have had fees or fines. That's not allowed. Making sure that those are transferred and that we do due diligence. But we're also being mindful that we're not transferring information that we shouldn't be. Credits, graduation, placement of transfers. If you're expelled, we're not required to admit you. What other questions did you have on this policy specifically? This is all stuff that we do already. So it's just making sure that we had it, we have it in place.
I had, I had a question. I was a little confused. I wasn't really sure if this was even applicable. But like, what if a student is approved by the Utah High School Activities Association to transfer, but we don't have room for them? We just, there's no space in the school?
We don't have to take them.
Okay, so it doesn't matter if UHSAA has approved them or not?
They can't, they can't be approved for a transfer unless they're approved for enrollment. So they have to do the enrollment first.
Okay.
We have to approve that. And then they go through and do the UHSAA transfer piece. And so they, they have to demonstrate that they have completed their enrollment information before UHSAA will.
So does that even apply to this kind of a policy or?
No, that's in our, that's in our extracurricular policy. And then, so we have a separate policy for that. That governs that piece of it.
I have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
My first one is on line 131. We're talking about an enroller having up to 30 days after a student is in the school to provide the identification and other documentation. Is that typically something you have 30 days to do after you start? Or do you typically need that documentation in place before you're enrolled?
We typically want it before you're enrolled, but technically you can't.
Legally have up to.
You have up to 30 days. So like, for example, you don't just turn the kid away because you're like, well, you don't have birth certificate. Forget it. You're not enrolling in school and it takes the parent three weeks. No, we enroll them. Now, after that 30 days, we usually give them some warnings about that we need this documentation and what does this look like and those pieces in place, so.
And then I think the only other one really worth mentioning is we talk about health examinations with enrollment, but nowhere in this eligibility and admissions requirements does it state anything about immunizations. And I just wondered if we wanted to add something about that here? Just in general, what is the process?
Yep, that's great.
And make sure that that's included? Because I might look at this policy for that information.
That's a great point. Thank you. Okay. Policies done.
I do have one.
Oh, no, not done yet.
Sorry.
No, you're great.
The very end, line 252, the student identification number may not use a nine-digit number.
I know.
Can't use a social security number.
Social security, I can't remember. How many digits do we currently use? Are we going to need to move to?
I feel like it's six or seven.
Okay. So we're not even close to.
I think it's seven.
Because why didn't we just say we can't use the social security number?
I don't know that. I don't know why they don't say a social security.
But if we're not even close to needing that number.
No, we're not.
Okay.
We could put in parentheses, example, social security number. What is a nine, well, I had to read that twice.
Well, did you see my comment? I was like, what?
I started going like, what, nine digits? Oh.
Yeah.
Oh, that's what's happening, yes. It took me a hot minute. Yep.
And then just line 12 right there at the beginning, just we need to clean up that it's a sample policy. It's referring to.
Oh, yeah, 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 yep. You are correct. Thank you for catching that.
Anybody else?
Just want to follow up. When will policy committee be meeting again?
First week of August.
Okay.
I'm trying to look. I feel like we have a date already, but. August 5th at 3:30. I know you can't wait.